The Board of Education meeting for Monday, December 9th already. If everyone would stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let the record show, we have all board members present. We are in need of a motion to adopt the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
Make a motion.
Okay.
And we're dropping the one executive session.
Yes, thank you. We will have the first and third executive session.
First and third?
First and third.
Okay.
We have a motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Tammy, all in favor. Aye, seven zero. Tracy, did you have a chance to look over the bills?
I did, and everything was, appeared in order. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills for the month.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Tracy, and I think Jamie was faster than you, so she gets the second. All in favor? Aye, seven zero. Next up, we have a special guest, we, from Sunflower Bank, we have Maria and Anna. They have a very generous check for us. They, it's the Dodge City Public Schools check for the ABC program. And that encourages students to start a savings account, to help them with financial skills, to make informed decisions about money and resources.
Hi, good evening. We're so grateful to be able to partner with our ABC program for this year. This year, we were able to raise eight thousand ninety-four with eighty-four cents. And we will try to continue to keep it up for the following, so thank you so much.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you doing?
Thank you, guys.
Very generous of Sunflower Bank, and we appreciate that support.
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have STUCO reports, and we will start with our ladies from Dodge City High School.
Good evening, Board of Education and Dr. Dirksen. Since the last time we have spoke, we have had our girls' powder puff, which we had our juniors and senior girls play. We had two twenty-minute halves, and for most of the game, the juniors were winning, and then seniors came in and won, which was good for us. And then, before Thanksgiving break, we also had our canned food drive. In the past, we have collected about twenty-seven cans. And then this year, we got over six hundred cans, since we have implemented the new community system. And then this last week, we had our annual floor show. We had fourteen acts in an intermission. We encouraged our guests to go look at an art show that our students made special for it. And now I'll have Helen tell you about what's upcoming.
Good evening, everyone. We are in the last week before finals. With that, we do have the holiday spirit and the anticipation of a two-week vacation. So, we will be having another mini fundraiser with our candy cane grams. Much like the Boo Pops from October, the students can purchase a candy cane, write a message, and send it to their friends for just a dollar. Our communities will also be having a holiday decor competition to increase the rivalry, you know? Have that competition going through our school and that holiday spirit. Also starting this month, the National Honor Society will be having a winter coat drive that will last until mid-January. There will be donation bins across Dodge City businesses and our school if anybody wants to donate some winter coats. Also occurring in January will be the annual TOC basketball tournament, with more information to come in January. With it being our last board meeting of the semester, I just want to recap the significance of our communities initiative. So, the initiative has been in planning for quite some time before it was put into place. In May of this year, we actually started meeting with our students, so it had been going on for a long time. So, I just want to acknowledge the work of all our student coordinators, who put in the time over the summer to raise money and to get their communities, come, bring their communities to life with their colors and mascots. The beginning of the school year, not gonna lie, it was a bit rough with some expected backlash. However, somewhere along the way, it clicked. And as Macy said, we did raise over six hundred cans, because we did use that communities initiative to make it kind of a competition between the communities, to see who could raise more. And we've had many students attend many more events, just like the hatchet, we saw twenty percent of our student body attend. And not just that, but we've seen more participation in school spirit and much more engagement and pride in being a student at DCHS. With the incorporation of the Minga app in these events, we were able to see this progress in a much more effective manner. And we hope to continue this journey and see even more growth in the spring semester.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, next up, we have Dodge City Middle School.
Good evening, Dr. Dirksen and Board. Throughout the month of December, we have been getting our staff and students into the holiday cheer by playing Christmas music in the mornings at the beginning and the end of the announcements. We have been noticing staff and students have enjoyed it and have been asking what song we're playing the next day. Everyone really loves it. That bit to their morning. Also this month, DCMS is having the annual dodgeball tournament on December nineteenth with teams of six. It can be all boys, all girls, or co-ed. The money that is raised will be given to a wonderful cause. Also, we want to give a shout out to our sports team with girls' basketball having a great season and amazing teamwork, and our wrestling team who are undefeated this season. And we hope to win WAC and Haze. Since the quarter is almost over, that means the pep rally is getting closer. This time for a pep rally instead of a game, the YMCA will be coming and speaking to us. Any questions? Thank you. I hope y'all have a Christmas break.
Nice job.
Thank you.
You too. And next, uh, did I say Dodge City Middle School first? I jumped over Comanche. I'm sorry. I did that last time, didn't I? I'm sorry. You're up next.
Hello, good evening. I will be walking you guys through the flyer that I did hand out. So, first, we have our candy cane fundraiser. Peers and staff at CMS will be able to purchase candy canes and write a note to either another student or another staff. The sales or the purchases will be coming up tomorrow and will going on through this week and next week. Next, we have our giving back. As I had mentioned before, we did have a giving back project, and we decided to donate gifts to a local church for a kids' giving to kids' event being hosted at that church. Next, we have our food drive results. Now, for the results of our food drive competition, in the total, the total DCMS got was six hundred thirty items, and CMS got one thousand five hundred and sixty-three. Although CMS won the competition, the real winner was the manor house, because of how much food they got for the holidays, for Thanksgiving, and for Christmas. Now, as we put a quote on the bottom, "As we get closer to winter break, we have to remember that winter is a season of recovery and preparation." Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Looks good.
Nice job.
Thank you. Yes, but I do have to give credits to my secretaries. They did put those together.
You have a secretary.
Two of them.
That's the way to do it. Good job. But it's a great idea. I like having that.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy.
The gold star of the night.
Alright, and with our elementary reports, we have Carla Medrono from Lynn.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Dirksen. As you can probably already imagine, December is a month busy for our students and staff. Academically, teachers and students are focused on wrapping up our curriculum units and assessments. Currently, we are also administrating our FastBridge assessments, which we will wrap those up this Friday. We will be analyzing data before break to determine if our grade levels and building goals were met, as well as set new ones for the second semester. We also have a variety of events to celebrate the holiday season. Lynn and Sewell are hosting holidays around the world to celebrate the many cultures of our students and families. Beeson had a family dance last Thursday. Miller will be hosting Winter Wonderland. Central is doing a Polar Express Day featuring a magic show. Northwest and others are having a holiday lunch with families. Sunnyside is having a holiday breakfast with the Malas en Buñuelos. And Ross is having their PTO fundraiser with Breakfast with Santa Claus. In addition to those events, we also have music programs and award assemblies. A big thank you to the YMCA for continuing to provide the Keeping Our Promise Scholarship to our students. And admin are also planning fun activities for staff leading up to our Christmas break, as we do have a busy month, and we want to show our appreciation for everything that they do. Any questions? Thank you, and happy holidays on behalf of the elementary team.
Thanks, Carla. You too. We're ready next for a recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD four-four-three schools. No action will be taken by the Board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employer, employee's immediate supervisor. The President shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you would like to address the Board, please approach the podium now. Seeing nobody jump up, we'll move right along. Next up, we have the consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of the minutes from our November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four Board of Education meeting, approval of donations to Dodge City High School with the attached list, and the Dodge City Community Learning Center invoice from Southwest Plains Regional Service Center Adult Education Virtual Program, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Any questions on any of those items?
Make a motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll second. We've got a motion by Jeff and a second by Tracy. All in favor? Aye. Aye, seven zero. Alright, next up is, looks like we have Dr. Springsteen? And crew?
And crew. While they're hooking up this presentation, I do want to introduce some guests. We're gonna have Melissa Tisaka. She'll be presenting as our Academic Intervention Coordinator. Haley Quayar, who is a fourth-grade teacher at Sewell. And Jennifer Hendricks is a high school teacher, science teacher. And so, I'm very excited to have them here to share with you some of the exemplar practices that we have within our classroom. So, I want to take you back. Earlier in the fall, there was a request by one of our, our board members, board members, excuse me, to specifically talk about how we stretch and meet the needs of our students at or above grade level. And so, what we're gonna do in our presentation tonight is take you briefly through an overview of our structures, which I know that you are aware of and we've presented before, and kind of give you an idea about how we use these structures across the board, regardless of content area. It could be our core content or our electives. We also use a similar structure for our behavior, social, and emotional, so, not working. Then, what I really want to do then is shift into hearing some exemplar practices from these two teachers. Now, I've had an opportunity, and I get to, on a regular basis, go around and directly see or secondhand hear about the great things that are going on in the classrooms across this district. There is a lot of tremendous work to improve our instruction for all kids. And so, when you hear this presentation, everything that we have rooted, what we call our foundational structures in across our district, is to meet the needs of every student at all times. And so, we do spend a lot of time on remediation, because we do know we have gaps. We have a large number of our students that we are trying to bring up to grade level, so that tends to dominate a lot of our conversation. But I, I'm gonna say, we've probably been remiss, or I've been remiss, on not adding in the entire spectrum of our students. Because while we talk about remediation to close those gaps, we're also serving the needs of every student. Now, with any system and any process, we're continually getting better every day, and I see that. And I saw it today when I walked around and did observations in one of our middle schools. And so, I can see what's going on, the depth, the commitment our teachers have. So, we also know that there are areas that we're always going to need to improve, and so, that's a process. And that includes everybody from student input, from our teachers' input, principals. And so, we have really put these things into place to continually make sure that our students' academic and social-emotional needs are being met every day. And we couldn't do it without the quality staff, both our instructional staff, our classified and support staff, and our building administrators, not to mention the talent of our people here in this building. So, really is a team effort. And so, with that, my part is done, and we'll turn to the experts here.
And it is in the board agenda.
Yes.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Dirksen. So, I'm gonna talk to you about the structures tonight. I'm gonna start with, on the slide that talks about behind the scenes of MTSS, okay, the science of it. So, when we talk about MTSS, we're talking about our tiered instruction, and it is a framework to meet the needs of all students. We're looking at data during that time, and we're collaborating as teams to decide how to best meet the needs of those students, no matter what tier they fall into. When we do this, we look at math, reading, and social-emotional. When we talk about Tier One students, that are, that is students that are getting instruction whole class, they're getting the core instruction, and every student receives that instruction. Tier Two is gonna be an extension to the core. It can be whole group or small group, and it's gonna be strategic and targeted to meet those needs for where they need. Tier Three is gonna be skill-focused, small group, and intensive supports. We use our FastBridge assessments to determine where students fall within tiers, tier one, two, or three. And once we know what tier they fall in, we do have our district LA-approved protocol, tier protocol, sorry, to decide what instructional strategies and materials to use during that time to support students. So, in tiers two and three, there are materials available to help students. We can extend students, or they can remediate students with materials listed in there. We give FastBridge three times a year, and we sort those students into four quadrants. So, quadrant one students are students that are above, on or above grade level, and they're going to be receiving core instruction or extension during that time. Quadrant two students are accurate on the CBM, but not reading enough words per minute, so they're working on fluency. Quadrant three students are not accurate on a CBM, so they're working on phonics skills. And then, we have our quadrant four students, who are low on A-reading, and they're working on comprehension skills during that time. We progress monitor all of our students, no matter where they fall in the tiers. On grade level are once a month or above, and then below grade level are every two weeks. That way, we can monitor how they're doing within those practices. We also use summative assessments to help determine if they are an extension, how we can meet their needs at grade level or higher, or how they're doing on those, so we know where to remediate even more. We also have PLCs in place to help with this. And the main thing with, with PLCs is we want those teachers to focus on the impacts of their teaching and what worked well, what we need to continue doing well, and how we can replicate that. And we have four questions that, when they're in their PLCs, they are to talk through, and that's, what do we want students to learn? How we know they've learned it? How do we respond when students experience difficulty? And what do we do when they, when they already know it? So, those are the four questions that teachers talk through when they're in those PLCs. Any questions over the basic structures?
Hello. So, like they said, my name is Haley Quayar, and I teach at Sewell in fourth grade. So, to dive into how I challenge students, particularly above or at grade level students, I think it's important to look at the data, instructional planning, and then the strategies I actually use in my classroom. So, going over the data, I think it's important that you need constant data, not just the FastBridge screeners that we do three times per year. So, with that, I think that you need to know where the students are in the moment or real time, and that will help you see what the students need to master. So, like I said, you need to see where the students are, stretch them to a higher level. So, depending on what skill I'm working on or what the students need, I may use any of the following data points to see what I need to work on. FastBridge screeners that we do in the fall, winter, and then spring. Progress monitoring, which, like Melissa said, for some students, that's once a month. For some students, that's multiple times per month. I may also look at conversations in the classroom, both academic and non-academic, like playground language, how are they talking to their peers? Writing samples, listening to reading or group work, quizzes, exit tickets, worksheets. And then, I also look at the phonics continuum for each student. Finally, going into the instructional planning, I pride myself on the fact that I use qualitative and quantitative. I think, yes, it's important to look at the FastBridge screeners. However, you also need to look at their conversations that they are having with their peers, how they're speaking to other adults and such. In my reading class, I teach two foundational skills each week. One of them is the district on grade level what I'm supposed to be teaching. But then, the other one, I look at the data points that I mentioned, and I spiral, review, or teach what the students need. Some examples of this is if we just finished a narrative writing, and students were all really struggling with dialogue. I will spend a week working on dialogue, in addition to the district, what I'm supposed to be doing. However, spending that time will really help all students. Then, another example is if we're working on a writing, and students are struggling on where to put periods. I would stop, and I would create a story with no punctuation, and then the students would have to punctuate it. So, for Tier One kids, maybe I would also have them work on commas. While my just normal grade-level students, it would just be periods. It's also important to look at where each student is on the phonics continuum that I mentioned. Just because a student is on grade level, tier one, doesn't mean that there's something that they cannot work on, on the phonics continuum. Some examples of this is if I am teaching blends in my fourth-grade classroom, my Tier One kids may need multi-syllabic words. That's still something that I can work on them with. So, some ways or strategies that I challenge students. I think it's really important that you give them more challenging work and not more work. As a student who was in middle school, more gifted than others, it was often, go do that extra worksheet, and that wasn't beneficial to me. It was more work. So, some ways that I try to challenge is, for some of my students, I will ask them to add two vocab words into their writing projects. For Tier One kids, I may ask them to add a prefix or suffix, a skill we've worked on, to those two vocab words. So, that way, they are having to work on that additional skill. I may also have them maybe put the two words in one sentence instead of two different ones, so challenging them more. My Tier Three kids, I just made a note that I would only have them add one word into their PBA. So, for grade level, another example is I work on perfecting skills that are slightly above grade level, like dialogue. For fourth grade, they are not supposed to be perfect, writing dialogue and a whole story. But for my above-grade level kids, I may pull them and try to talk with them on where to put the commas, the dialogue tags, and just going above what is grade level for them. I may not expect them to totally be perfect that first time, but we will go back to that skill and then just continue to stretch them on that skill throughout the year. Another thing is I try to add skills in other areas. For example, if we're doing reading, Latin words for foundational skills, I will ask students to see if they have any prefixes or suffixes with those Latin words we're reading, or if they can find any vocab words in the story we're reading. So, even though we're working on foundational skills, we're still trying to pull in other areas. I also made a note that for elementary upper grades, we often talk about fluency. And so, I know Melissa made the note that for quadrant two, they are working on fluency. I wanted to make a note that it's not just quadrant two that works on fluency, it's also quadrant one and four, because fluency is not just how fast the students are reading, and that's something that we work on for above or grade-level kids. It's going to be on how they have expression, their pace, as well as their fluency. I still do phonemic awareness activities with all of my students. It doesn't matter if they are at or above grade level, because I know that will help strengthen their fluency and other reading skills. I also will try to change the activity slightly for above or on-grade level kids. So, if we're reading a story, the students are supposed to read it accurately. I'll ask above-grade level kids to practice their expressions. I'll ask them to read it in a scared voice, while the rest of the class is maybe just trying to say the words correctly. I also wanted to just mention, for reading groups, we do the tier three time. For above or grade-level kids, we don't just give them a story and say, read for thirty minutes. Have fun. For them, I think it's really important that you are still practicing the skills like comprehension, fluency, speaking and listening, and presenting skills. I like to give them real-world situations. So, for example, my grade level or above kids just read Phantom of the Tollbooth. So, now they are supposed to create a poster or a presentation over that, and how they could tie that into their life. I tend to do a book study with these kids, so they'll read for fifteen minutes or so, and then they'll do an activity worksheet or conversation with the person in that room. So again, that is working on multiple different skills like prefixes and suffixes, they're working on ELA standards, and it's just giving them a little bit more than what the other kids are getting. For math, I tried to tie in other subjects. So if we're doing measurements or something, I may tie in social studies on how the Native Americans measured horses with their hands. And so I would ask the tier one or above kids to think about that and how, what else we could use to measure things. So just trying to get their brain thinking in a different way rather than just the traditional, what the curriculum is doing. For math, I also ask tier one kids to use a strategy of my choice rather than letting them choose. So this stretches their mind in a way that they may not have normally been thinking if they had been only using one strategy that was their favorite or the best one. I also try to change my vocabulary with the tier one kids. So for example, for the rest of the class throughout a unit, I may say denominator or bottom number, denominator, bottom number. But for tier one kids, I will start using denominator, only denominator, a lot earlier for those students because I expect them to understand that vocabulary faster. For both reading and math, I think it is important to work with small groups. And so I try to pull all students, my sped students, as well as my tier one students at some point during the week to challenge them in some sort of way. If they are above grade level and they're comfortable with it, I try to build their leadership skills in my classroom. And so I appoint them as team leaders in my groups. So they're the ones who are making sure everyone is talking, everyone is engaged in the conversation or lesson. And I think that's an important life skill to teach them because these above or grade level kids are most of the time going to be the bosses, you know, the professors of the world. I also work on academic discourse with all my students. But for tier one and above, I expect them to use more engaging, I agree, I disagree conversations rather than just in my opinion. So to recap, I look at several data points, both qualitative and quantitative, to guide my planning and instruction for all students. To challenge above or at grade level students, I focus on more challenging work, not more work.
Okay, wow, this place is so different than where I hang out. Maybe you guys want to come check it out sometime. Hi, my name is Jennifer Hendricks and I teach up at the high school. I've taught up there for about ten years. I mainly teach honors physics. So I'm used to taking super complex things like Haley just talked about and making them very simple to anybody in the audience, because sometimes my kids can be a little tough. But I also teach an on-level earth-space science class that I also really enjoy. So when we think about stretching kids, it's one of my favorite things to do and it's probably what keeps me in teaching because you just really can underestimate kids. You really never know how far up a kid can move in their understanding of things. But how do you gauge that as a teacher? I think first of all, you have to establish some relationships and understand where the kids are going. So the first thing that I think about for most of my physics kids is the post-secondary academic world. But also for my earth-space kids, what sort of, most of them are going to go into a tech job, most of them have aspirations to do that or maybe just go into the workforce. So a couple of the ways that I kind of look forward for them is I've developed some relationships with WSU, Wichita State University, as well as Fort Hays State. Both of those campuses bring professors to Dodge City High School to my classroom once each semester. And they basically conduct a university physics or engineering class for my students. And that's been really eye-opening for the kids because it gives them a little doorway entrance to what is this world like? And some kids have talked about how, oh, okay, maybe I could see myself in that. It's not quite as foreign. But it's also given me a collection of colleagues that I can ask, hey, what are you seeing? What are the things that are holding kids back in engineering department or in an engineering degree? It's given me a gauge, you know, for, you know, how hard or what skills should I be emphasizing? And sometimes it's not the skills that I think I need to have in my class. But what does that actually look like in the classroom? Okay, so stretching kids is so challenging, it's impossible to just digest it and it's not a formula. It takes a lot, it's an art, I think. And I think it starts with asking interesting questions. So in my earth-space science this year, you know, we were going to study the sun, we were going to study stars, we were going to study how the earth orbits and other planets in the solar system orbit. And so we asked our question, this question for the class. Why is the earth so habitable? Okay, and I want you to think about that. That's a challenging question. If I ask you to draw a model that explains why, why does life exist here? And so through that, then we studied the stars, we studied the sun, we studied, you know, planetary orbits. And through those, then the kids came back to that initial model, that, back to that drawing and refined that diagram. Now, we layered on to really push up their understanding. We layered on what scientific principles does this, does your model rest on? We layered in academic discourse, critiquing, presenting to other kids. And then of course, a big part of it is the teacher. The teacher's got to be right there with the kids learning and asking questions. Why do you think that? How do you know that? And if that was true, what you think, how would we test it? Of course, that's a big deal in science. So I think that's the first way, is asking interesting questions. The second thing that I really think pushes kids in physics is to investigate challenging real world problems, but ask them to analyze data or come up with their own data through testing or some sort of lab and come up with a claim and then state what scientific principles are using. So right before Thanksgiving, we analyzed the video of a YouTube video. We said, is it fake or is it real? And we used scientific principles and data to, for kids to see like, you know, is it fake or is it real? And they had to justify their position. We also did one where there was two different claims. There was grandma's claim, drive slower if you have a pickup, a two-wheel drive pickup. Or grandpa's claim, put some bags of sand in the back of the pickup. And kids had, they were given a can, an emotion detector, and some weights, and I said, okay, who's right? And that little bit, well, first of all, not having the scaffold, not having me to say like, okay, do this first, do this first, do this first, or second, third. You know, not having that scaffold makes kids practice those real world skills that I can imagine a boss is going to want someday. So anyway, I want to say that I love stretching kids. We probably don't talk about how much we do that in, in our everyday jobs, but it's my favorite thing to do. And I think the hardest part about it is being a teacher that believes more in the kids than they believe in themselves. So with that, I'm done. And please feel free to come to my classroom anytime. So I think we're supposed to say, are there any questions?
Haley, I was just wondering, how many children do you, do you have in your class?
So currently I have nineteen.
Do you have a para?
At times.
At times?
Not throughout the day, no.
How, how, how do you utilize the para? Because you, you've got a really involved process that I really appreciate.
Yeah, so I try to pull students to my table. Even if I have a special education para in my room, I like to pull the special education students because I want to see where they are, I want to see how I can help them. So if I have a para with a special education student, they will come back and assist me. If it's me and a general education para, again, they're very much in and out. But if I can and I have one in there, I will tell them, hey, can you work with so, so and so and so and so? And they may go to their table or go out to the hallway and work with them, kind of like what I'm doing in my classroom. Or I also try to have my para at least once per week, just walk around. So if we're working on a writing project, they're available for students to ask questions and help in any other sort of way since I'm more contained with a group.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have one additional question to that. Let's say that your scheduled topic that you're doing, that's the district level at pace and you have a large number that, of students that aren't mastering it, but you have a smaller group that are. How do you balance that time? Because I, when you look at the scores, we have a large group that are not at, at the highest level. But to keep their, you know, the mastery versus rigor, how are you balancing that? And how challenging is that in your time for the day? We only have so many minutes. And I know you have to give up something to add those minutes. And I always am amazed at how few minutes are left at the end of the day to make sure we can at least get people, or the students to mastery while still challenging the higher level students without causing a lot of the disparity in where they're going with their education.
So it's very challenging. I'm not going to stand here and say that it's, you know, easy. It's not. However, I do think it's important to stretch those students and to, like you said, scoop up the students that are needing it. So I try to get kind of a happy medium. And then when my, when I meet with a small group, then I will go ahead and challenge. So for example, if we're working on punctuation, and again, I saw that the curriculum is having us work on compound sentences with those punctuation, I may have my on-grade level kids just working on conjunctions. But my above grade level kids, I'm going to pull and I'm going to have them take apart compound sentences, put together compound sentences, and like totally change them around. While below grade level, I just expect them to put a comma in a conjunction, if that makes sense. So I try to change it slightly where, yes, it's grade level, but where am I going to meet all my students?
Does it become competitive between the students when they see somebody else is getting to do more? It, does it stretch the students to try to get into that group? Or what's the social emotional when that's going on? We're like, oh, I'm just in this group. Is that?
I do think especially at fourth grade, there is some competitiveness with it. I'm thinking about our reading groups. For example, we have our above grade level reading Phantom of the Tollbooth and they get to make posters and presentations. And we're letting them use Magic School AI and all the other kids are like, why can't I do that? It's like, well, you know, that's just their level right now. So I do think that there's some competitiveness and for some students that may be like, oh, I need to work harder. For some students, they're going to shut down and, you know, say, well, I can't do that. So I think it's up to the teacher to kind of phrase it in a way of like, well, we're all going to get there someday. You know, we're going to work on this skill now and see what we can do or grow into.
Awesome, thank you.
Are the honors classes at the high school, are those open enrollment? Or is there a criteria set to access one of those classes?
There is a criteria. Most of them, you have to maintain a C average. And if you were not, for example, let's take, let's say you came in in middle school and you just took an on-level physical or science class, if you made an A or a B, there's a good, in that class, there's a good chance that your teacher might recommend that you go up to the honors level or you could self-initiate that. We have kids sometimes that choose not to do that because they don't want the extra workload. In honors physics, there is the, you have to have a C in your previous science class and you have to have some math classes. But because physics is one of the requirements for the Kansas Scholars Program, I get about fifty percent of true honors kids that have come through the honors track. And then the other fifty percent are on-level kids that want that high-level diploma. And they're, they're hard workers and, and they're willing to do the work. And can I just answer Haley's question as well at the high school level? You know, one of the things, you talked about the social emotional, and in physics, it's really easy for us to get huge discrepancies in ability levels because some kids come in not very good at math and some kids are taking calculus, okay? And so everybody's in that class together. And I, you know, I, I tend, I do separate kids once in a while. But I find that building the, a community in the class where kids help each other is one of the, one of the best ways that I've found at the high school level to rise up those lower kids. So I have some specific activities that I use that I won't go into, but it helps move the ideas around and stabilizes those. You know, if you had kids that were on a lower tier, it'll bring them up quite rapidly. And then, you know, one of my former students, when she was done with my class, she said, you know, I love how it's a community. We all get through it together. So some kids are going to be way up here, some kids are going to be down here, but that doesn't mean we can't all stretch up. Do you know what I'm saying? So I take it, there's just different ways to do it in the classroom and I wanted to mention a different way besides just competition.
That's excellent. I'm just here to, first of all, defend the quote that I got through most of my academic career by, and that is that Cs get degrees. We're very appreciative of that, but what outstanding example of educators that we provided for you tonight. Isn't that fantastic? I'm really appreciative of both of these ladies and the examples that they give, so I'm very grateful for that.
Okay, I had one more thing. I just saw, you know, on your presentation on the tier one, we, you know, the core curriculum every student receives. And then we go over to tier three and we have skilled focus, small group, and intensive support. I guess when I asked the question, I, I kind of, like, I get all these teachers are, you know, doing kind of their, their own thing, you know, as far as pushing them forward. I would just want to make sure that we have that skilled focus for that, that group that is just truly, truly above. You know, like, I would say my kid's above, but it's not above above. So, you know, those kids that are, like she said, not more work, like higher level of work. So I guess I just want to make sure that is in every single classroom, you know, that it's structured and that we do have that. Similar to what we do at the high school. Because I know when my kid was in middle school, there was talk about getting rid of the higher level math classes. And I don't, I'm not for that. I don't know what the other board feels like, but I do feel that they're, you know, everything in life is, you know, where you're at and we want to keep pushing them. So I, I guess I would like some information if we've taken that out of middle school. I know that was just a talk when he was in there, so I don't know if it ever happened or not.
No, we still have algebra and those courses at the middle school, so those are still in there. And both middle schools work with the high school to kind of, they're using the same curriculum and resources to teach those courses. So we do that with math. And I fully understood where you, what you were asking for. And it actually has led to a lot of good conversation, not only internally here in this building, but also with the principals at our administrative council meetings about, are we being attentive to all students? Because we can get very much into a deficit mindset. Because we want to bring, I mean, the hearts are out there, but sometimes in that attempt, and I think with what Mr. Hires is also saying, there's, there seem, there is a lot, there are structures, but those structures provide clarity on what we should do and which students we should do that for. And so as we're seeing teachers become more proficient with those, we're starting to see, as these two examples have clearly shown, is building that one-on-one relationship to stretch every single. And, and I hundred percent understood where you're coming from. It's a fair question and it's something that we need to continue to put in front of us each and every day that every single student deserves the best that we can give them. That it's appropriate work for them, not more work. And I think that was the best way she could have put that.
Thank you for doing this.
You bet.
So this might be a little off topic, but speaking about the honors courses got me thinking about it. Are A and P classes, the advanced placement? And you'll have to forgive me, that's why I'm asking the question. So are those classes, those A and P classes, are those put together to stretch the student academically? Or are they more, we're going to teach you what you need to know so you can pass the test?
I'm going to give you my general interpretation. So advanced placement courses?
I've gotten in on that.
You come on up.
Oh, not my opinion, the experts.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, I taught, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
I, I taught advanced placement physics. We offered that at the high school. And we could only ever get about eight or nine kids to enroll in it, okay? And over time, the enrollment in those classes was going down. And, you know, you, it's hard to get good discussion, it's hard to get good learning if you don't have, you know, ten kids. So that was one of the difficulties. Now, there, those classes are so rigid and structured. They, you have to have a syllabus about everything that you're going to cover and it is a true college class. In fact, I think it's more than a college class because they'll tell you at DC three, they don't have to cover all that stuff. But if you're teaching a, you know, an advanced placement class, you have to cover everything and it's all going to be on the test. And it is, it is, you can have no deficiencies going in there. You know what I mean? You've got to be way up here. And so what that would create over the semester, and I'm really speaking from physics, but there are other teachers that I think felt the same way, is by the middle of the semester, and remember, these are semester-long courses, you have about five kids that totally understood what was going on and then you had five kids that were totally lost, okay? Now, in science, we want to make sure kids understand the foundational principles that are going to make them curious, effective thinkers in the future. And I would see my AP physics students not be able to And I would see my AP physics students not be able to answer a very basic level question that a regular honors physics kid could. Why is that? Because they didn't have time to really understand the concept. There was so much content to go through that you had to blast through. And so you were really sacrificing, um, you were sacrificing true and deep understanding for hiding your misunderstanding, getting it through the math class and then getting your credit at the end, but you had to pass at the end. And that's the key. Yeah. And so I also think another thing that played into that, we've dropped that class and we don't offer it. We offer a different physics class instead for those types of kids that want to go beyond. We offer physics two now. And it just has less content, we can go much deeper. But the other thing that makes it A and P or advanced placement challenging is at the community college, you can go over there and take a class and get a grade. If you take an advanced placement class, you might go through that whole year of calculus, fail the test, you don't get that. You don't get those hours. So it was a, I felt it wasn't a fit for us. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks for that presentation and thank you ladies. Appreciate that. Very good information. All right. Yeah, looks like you're up, Matt.
Yes, yes, it is.
It's easier than coming after kids. I mean.
Excuse me, Zello to School Links for our IPS and our whole post-secondary type program. Um, one of the main reasons is, is that we found out with career crews in Zello over time, it just hasn't stayed updated with everything else. School Links, we first caught wind of it when we were in our KISA cohort group with Gary County. And so we set up a meeting with them in Kansas City at the ASCA conference. Um, got some good information and since then, we've really been moving with it. You know, trying to see about incorporating that into our program, K twelve. Originally, it was gonna be six twelve, but the elementary counselors were also at ASCA and they were like, can we move to it this time? Um, one of the neat things about this program is it really focuses a lot on many different aspects. And the key thing I think is as we move into that new graduation requirements for the class of twenty twenty eight, there's gonna be some pieces that are gonna be tough to track. Every kid has to have two post-secondary assets. So that's five hundred and sixty kids that have these two little things and they could be from like SEAL of Bileiteracy to Eagle Scout to two years of varsity. I mean, there's all kinds, there's twenty-three different ones. So this program helps track that. It'll also help track our work-based learning that, for those of you don't know, Maria Kane has done an amazing job with our whole school district on promoting business and promoting kids and that. Um, so that's gonna be huge as well. The big difference is though, it's about twenty-one thousand more per year. But I believe a lot of that's in the features that come with it, the user friendliness of the program. Um, what we wanna do this year with it is start at the second semester. And when I say start it, get it purchased so we can start doing the training and have everybody up and running solidly by August of next year. Cause this isn't gonna be a simple process. It's a lot of counseling work and a lot of getting schedules put in and learning it. But I think it's important to, Gary County's doing the same thing and they're our KISA cohort group. So it'll be nice, you know, bounce back and forth to them how we're using each of these programs. So what I'm asking tonight is that we purchase it for three years, half this year, then two more years um for a price of one ten eight oh six fifty-eight. That's what we, what it issue the purchase order for, but it will be billed out yearly. So it's not, we're not paying all that right now, but we get the discount if we write the purchase order for it now. So we'll be paid out over three years. And one other thing to keep in mind too, the, uh, you know, the case STE board outcomes, three of them are directly related to post-secondary ed, high school graduation and IPS. Three things this program helps support. So. So tonight I'm asking for approval to purchase this program and replace Zello moving forward. We will use Zello through the rest of this year, but we will start transitioning. Hopefully by, I mean, hopefully we're up to, ready to go towards the end of the year. But we wanna be able to use some of that summer time to really get on board and that gives Victor and his crew time to really get it up and running as well. So.
How are you, how are we gonna retain the Zello data? Like, say I'm a sophomore and I've been in that career cruising in Zello?
I can only tell you what the salespeople told me. They said it migrates very easily. So with the help of School Links and Victor, I have, they've done it in many places. I, so I just have faith and honestly, if it comes to questioning that that's gonna be an issue, we'll, we'll have to address it. But they seem to think there's no issues and there's, you know, there's not as much data honestly as I would love to have in there right now. So. I think this will be a much more comprehensive program. It even, even ties into FASPA stuff. I mean, once we get into that, it, you know, but you can upload that and easily, easily track people there too. So it's, it's just a lot better program. So.
Okay. Pardon my, uh, my ignorance, okay? I'm totally ignorant of what we're talking about. Who uses this? I mean, in what, um, does a, does a student go into School Links?
Every, every K twelve student will use it. K five is mostly career exploration. Once you, once you hit six eight, it's career exploration plus IPS, which is your individual plans of study. It's now required from like sixth grade on that a kid has a plan of study out through one year after high school. So every single kid will use it. And once again, the high school, it's builds resumes, it keeps career portfolios, it, it's being used by everybody.
So who instructs the young people in doing?
The counseling does a lot of it. At the elementary, um, their teachers get involved in it a little more. Um, I know at middle schools, their connect classes do it, but the counselors are the main brains behind it. I mean, they're the ones that are doing most of it.
Okay. How, how, how often does an adult look at it? You know, you know, to, I mean, to guide, you know?
Well, right now, we currently, at the uh, middle and high school level, the IPS is kind of standalone piece. And then you got Zello over here. So we'll look at it a lot more when they're tied together. But as far as staff goes, they should, they're looking at it quite a bit to see where the kids are. Kids are even plugging stuff into it.
I was gonna say, isn't that what you do at parent teacher conferences? You go over with their main teacher? Is that what we're talking about?
That's the same similar thing, yeah.
Yeah, I think when we go into parent teacher conferences, they're supposed to upload all their, like their goals and is that what we're talking about? Okay.
And, and, and the key piece is too, I mean, we would love if every parent could get into, I mean, they can, is just do it. And be able to get into these programs and see what their kids, you know, and really sit down and look at it. So.
It's, it's been a day or two since I went to a parent teacher conference.
Well, you're always welcome. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jamie, second by Jared, all in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Seven zero. Thanks, Matt. Jason?
All right, I'm gonna plug this in just to see if maybe it was an issue with this level and not our system. But if not, I've got Plan B ready to go with Karen. Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Dirksen. Um, this evening, I've just got an information item from the HR department. It does not look like that's going to work, Karen. So if you wanna pull that up for me, I would appreciate it. So this is the presentation that was linked in the board agenda for you. Um, seems like we've been in a compensation slash comparability study forever. I, I get it. Um, but I wanna kinda take a minute and go back through why it has taken us so long and what we did accomplish in the district from our perspective as we um kinda slowed some things down and really took a deep look into our current reality. Um, so. Can you turn that into the actual slideshow for me, Karen? Nope. Okay, that'll, you can go back the other way. It'll, that, that'll be fine. There we go. So this, this whole entire project started um way back in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, really in the fall of that year. Um, when we were going through and having some conversations about some other things, there were some questions from board members and others about compensation and how we currently compare. And really there was a desire that I could tell um to really take a deep look into our classified or hourly wage employees at that point in time to see how those positions compared across the board. Um, along with that, obvi- there, there's some obvious reasons from a district perspective that we would wanna make sure that our compensation and comparability are not just externally comparable, but internally comparable. Um, and so the, the consistency in the competitive and fair wages and having compliance measures to make sure that we are meeting those things is very important to make sure that we stay out of trouble um with different types of legal um issues as well. So we looked at a lot of those things and decided that after that discussion, we had a discussion at the district cabinet level. Um, and we decided to start seeking out organizations outside of our own entity that completed studies like this. Um, first time I've ever been a part of a study like this. So we ended up looking at four or five different agencies, did our due diligence, really researched um and spoke to individuals that had completed comparability studies with those organizations. And ultimately, um, we came back to you in the spring of twenty twenty-three and decided to go with the Arnold Group out of Wichita. So at that point, um, it was kind of Hammer, myself and Tara um that have been actively involved in this entire process and have been having um conversations with that organization. But we also have building principals and department leaders and, and a lot of others that have come into this project along the way due to the scope that we turned it into. So originally, this was gonna be just a quick thing that we were going to do. Um, in fact, the original scope, we were gonna do twenty job descriptions and Garden City was gonna do twenty job descriptions and we were gonna compare. And then we were gonna make decisions on that somehow, I don't know. Um, it, it literally took me all of about fifteen minutes to realize that if we were gonna get out of this, what we needed to get out of this and spend our money wisely, so to speak, we, we needed to go slow to go fast. Um, and so after like one meeting with us, the Arnold Group and Garden City all at the table, um, I decided to come back to you and we actually um requested approval for us to expand the scope of our study to, to include some other things that we originally didn't intend to include in this study. Um, and so along, along that way, um, we decided that um we needed to update all of our job titles and job descriptions before we could really get something out of a compensation study. Because if we're calling the same thing three different names and have multiple job descriptions that have evolved over the years and nobody really knows which one goes with what, um, then we needed to do some, some internal work and we really needed to spend some time um taking care of our business before we could really get anything further out of that study. And so that's what we did. Um, we kind of just hit pause on some of the external things and we really started working internally to make sure that we could get to that point. And I can tell you that we did get to that point. Um, it just took us time because um we had to review every single job description for our district. We had to review every single title and, and try to be, come up with consistent titles for the positions that were um the same at the time. And we are to the point now, a, a goal of mine, when I first moved into my office, I reached out to many HR directors for job descriptions and different things. And at that point in time, the HR director from Derby Public Schools sent me a link to a document that when I opened it, it had their entire list of um job titles. And the job description was hyperlinked to the job title. And at that moment, I went, that's what we need. Um, and we are almost there. Um, we will be building that product here probably in the springtime. So at some point, we will have just that for our district where we know what every position is. We know what the title of every position is and you can click and get the job description that links to that position. Um, and so that was a, that was a huge piece to getting all of the information we needed and getting everything consistently um put in the same format, even, even, we, we had job descriptions that would be posted and they weren't even in the same format. I mean, it was just whoever came up with what um at that point in time and that's what was stored in our O drive. And that's what we accessed to post a job position. So now, when you look at a job description, all of them have the exact same categories, they have the exact same look. You know, when you pull up a job description, you're looking at something for Dodge City Public Schools. Um, and so even that was something that was a byproduct of what we ended up doing. Um, so one other thing that we ended up having to do along the way is because we've evolved over time and the experience that we have given for classified staff members, hourly wage individuals is how we, or classified staff is how we refer to those individuals that earn hourly wages in our district. So when you hear me use that term, that's what I'm speaking to. Um, but because we've evolved with how we give them credit for their experience and we now try to give credit better than we had twenty years ago, we had to go back and we had to do internal and external journeys, so to speak, on every single one of those people to make sure that when we came out of this study and we had the information we have, that we weren't automatically recompressing our entire wage scale because new employees got credit for years of experience at other entities that were verifiable and translatable and all of those good things. And employees that have been here for twenty years didn't get that same credit when they came into our district with some of those same things. And so we had to go back and we mapped out internal and external journeys for every single employee that makes an hourly wage in our district and we have all of that information. So as we move forward with the decision-making process, which will come early in the spring when I come back and we have different types of conversations, um, then we know exactly where all of those individuals currently sit. Any, any questions so far? So you can imagine the, the timing and, and again, this is just an overview and trying to get um you and everyone else to understand why this has kind of drawn out um to the length it has. Um, but also, um, we, we decided that we wanted to find a way to make these things meaningful and have something coming out of this study that we could utilize as a district for some policy expectations or some consistency in operations. And so the Arnold Group introduced us to what is called the HAY scoring system. It's H A Y, it's a gentleman's last name. Um, he came up with this um idea. It, it's been around since the nineteen fifties. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and skip back one here. Right there on number two, it's kind of a summary of how that HAY scoring method works. Um, I will be honest, it, it is very good and it helps us. So what we do is there are seven compensable factors, they call them, that we take any job description that we have and we sit down and we score that job description out based on the duties, responsibilities, education requirements, all of, what, what's the decision-making authority? All of these different things that go into that job description, which is why we had to get them all in a consistent mode to begin with. And so we sit down and we score it out and then we can use that score as a gut check as we look at how different things in our district score out and if it makes sense for those things to score the way they do. Or if we need to go back and take a look and say, does this job description really um spell out what that job is or what the requirements should be for that particular position? And so it's one piece of data that we can use other than just force ranking everything. Usually in education, what happens over time is you just compare it to some other position in your district or you compare it to some other district in another district and you just come up with a number and you force rank everything without really having a systematic way to making sure that all of those forced rankings even make sense. And so that HAY method of scoring is something that we have already used. Um, from our perspective, every single time we have an opening come up and we're looking at job descriptions and we're getting ready to post job descriptions and we're going through the process of reviewing the current job description, we use it as a gut check and we score it out and we make sure that it makes sense for it to be where it's at. Um, and if it's not, then we start having conversations about now what. And so that's where some of those things that have been brought to you as um fr- from HR as uh reclassifications and those types of things, that's why those things are coming. Because we are trying to get things more systematically aligned as we continue to move forward. So then, um, just number two on this one, kind of an interesting tidbit. We have an Excel workbook now that has our entire employee group in it. It's over twenty-five gigabytes large. Um, and it can calculate to a dollar what it would cost us to do different types of things with our entire, entire employee group. Um, if we wanted to do a one percent. with our entire employee group. If we wanted to do a 1% COLA adjustment for this group, but also address the compression that's occurred in other areas over time, then we can put numbers into this workbook and it will tell us what the dollar value of that is going to be for our current, real-time staff. And so, it's been a huge advantage for us as we get ready to start some of those other conversations as we leave this semester and enter next semester and see what we can afford as a district as we go through and try to put some of those things that were findings within this study into action within our district. So, here are some of the findings that I put on here to share with you this evening. Obviously, as I mentioned, our job titles, job descriptions, organizational charge and employee journeys, we're all in need of updating. We have done that. And, that is, so, the organizational charge, that's where the department leaders and the building leaders and others were pulled into this project. Because, not only did we map out current reality, we actually also asked our department leaders and building leaders, "What are your needs? How are your needs going to evolve in the future? Let's start looking at this." I kind of, and I know it's not as simple, but I kind of equate this from the HR perspective as capital outlay, right? We map out capital outlay for years to come, three to five years, but we've never really had that approach with human capital, which is, from my opinion, the most important capital we have in a school district because we're kind of about people. So, it's something that I really have challenged us to look at and think about differently and start mapping these things out. So, we can see what those future needs are and start budgeting accordingly for some of those needs. And that way, everything's not, and after the fact, it's already emergency when we have a request come in for some of those things. And so, that is something that we are continuing to progress on. Second finding up there, our wages as a whole for certified teachers are very competitive in all job markets. So, even though, as the study evolved, we decided to really focus from our own internal perspective on the classified hourly wages and those individuals affected. What we found also is that our certified teachers make very good wages across all job markets, across local, regional, and national comparisons currently. Number three, our wages for administrative and classified exempt employees are also very competitive in certain areas, but not in others. That being said, what we found is that there is a little bit of compression within our administrative salary schedules because of how we currently allot for those different items that administrators have access to. And because administrators currently all start at one single base salary and then those other things are stacked up on there, we have some compression between different positions because of those extra pieces that are in there. So, I say that to tell you that, number two and number three, with our certified, our administration, and our supervisors, we have not crossed that bridge completely yet with a full-scale study looking at us versus other districts and how we map out. I have a spreadsheet started that has a very solid comparison of us in a school district 50 miles from here that I believe came from a request from one of the board members. But, it also has a lot of information added to it already from my perspective because I have a lot of conversations from my HR position with other HR directors. And I have a lot of other information from other districts on those administrative pieces already. So, I've started adding them to that spreadsheet. That is something that I plan on starting after we get the action steps and the things in place for the classified staff, hopefully this spring. Then, we will roll into a full-scale review of all of our other staff, certified and administrative and directors, so to speak.
I'm still not sure I understand what you mean by compression.
Okay. And so, that is, so, number five, I'm going to get to that here shortly if you can give me 10 more seconds. So, number four up there, we also found out that our starting wages for classified staff are very competitive in all markets. So, the main thing we found with classified staff, hourly wage workers in our district is we have a large compression that has occurred over time. And what that means is, even though our starting salary is very good in almost every single situation, that somebody that's been here 20 years, the max they can make more than somebody that's been here one hour is $1. That's what compression is from this perspective.
Got you.
So, again, looking at individuals that, speaking of recruiting and retention, especially retention in today's job market, that is the key piece, honestly, that we found that we need to address within the classified wage scale for our hourly rate employees is we really need to take a look at how we can address that compression situation. Because, imagine the frustration from somebody who has given 20 years of their career to your district and somebody walks in day one and makes within a dollar of what they make. And that's the max that we have currently. So, that is where we're kind of at with this particular part of the study. And again, I will come back early January and we will have deeper level conversations about exactly what we're going to request of you. We're going to have some conversations at the cabinet level first and start making a few decisions that we want to bring to you as proposals. But, this is kind of, and I know this isn't very big and you can't read it, which isn't, it doesn't really matter for my point. On the left on the screen is the proposed new classified hourly wage scale, which has about 15 rows to it. But, if you look at the actual ranges of the positions, there is a large range from the starting out pay all the way over to the max pay range, which you should probably have in place in a district or in any business of size where you're trying to retain people over time. On the right side is our current wage scale, which has 45 lines, but you cannot make more than a dollar more than the person who started today. So, that's what we are hoping to address as we move forward with the rest of this study. A couple other findings. There were some departments that reported staffing shortages or a need for restructuring. And again, we're in the process of handling some of those things as we continue to move through this process and have some turnover in different positions. And there are some discrepancies that exist between public sector and private sector wage levels in certain industries. And that's the one that I brought up at the last lunch meeting. Things like technology, for example, we're going to have to find a balance in certain areas. Because, what the private sector is paying for some of those things doesn't even exist in the public sector currently. And so, we're going to have to make sure that the scoring method will help us with this. Because, we've got to make sure that specific responsibilities and duties and things that we expect with that position from our own district perspective are paid at a certain level. And we can't get caught just inflating those things because the private sector is willing to pay more for that currently. Does that make sense? Now, there's some other things that are going to have to go into that. We have very competitive benefits, medical vision, like we have to put a whole package together. And that's why, as we continue to move forward, we're also going to have some discussions about some investment planning things and some other types of benefits that we can put into place to try to keep those good employees, even though the private sector might pay more overall salary for some of those positions. And again, we will have to continue to look at those things on a daily basis and try to find that balance that will help us. So, what's next? We have to finalize wage and compensation policy. Those are the things that we are going to discuss at the cabinet level. And then, I will bring back to you as proposals for review and hopefully adoption at some point in early this spring. And then, we have to really look at the hard dollars and what we can afford as a district. Like I said, I think our number one finding coming out of this portion of the study is how do we deal with that compression that has occurred over time? And, what are we willing to do? Or, how much can we do for those employees that have been compressed because they are long-term employees in our district? And then, we've just got to figure out how we want to proceed with the administrative and the classified exempt staff, which again, I plan on getting deeper into a full-scale conversation on that come next fall or after, after July 1, after we hopefully have all the decisions made and have the dollar amounts and all of those things figured for the classified level. And then, obviously, we've got to, and this is one of the key reasons why we chose to pause and go slower. This takes a timeline and a very hefty communication plan. You don't just start making changes to wage scales and send emails to people saying, "Oh, by the way, here's what you get," or "Here's what you don't get." And so, really, last year, when it came time to start discussing raises and how things were going to look, we weren't ready. And we knew we weren't ready. And so, we chose not to try to force something through just so we could say we hit a certain timeline and we could make this arbitrary deadline and say we did this. And that's why the natural rollover is June 30, July 1, the fiscal changeover in a school district. And so, we decided last year, we were going to maintain status quo, continue to work through the process. It gave us more time to do our due diligence. And this year, our goal is to be able to have these conversations early in the spring, develop that communication plan, get this thing communicated appropriately to our employees, and then have those things go into effect July 1 of next school year. And in the meantime, we'll do all those other things we do. Any questions?
I'm looking forward to seeing.
Yeah.
I'm really looking forward to seeing how this uncompressed looks. Because, those two charts she threw up there?
Well, I can tell you, uncompressed, it looks like about $2 million if we owned 100% of the compression. So, that gives you an idea of how it looks.
I mean, if, maybe I'm reading the charts wrong. You guys, somebody starts $11.75 an hour and then if they stay here 40 years, they're making a hundred and something thousand dollars?
Well, but those are the things we have to make decisions on, on policy.
Right.
Because, no, yes, we have to figure out how long of a scale do we want? Do we want it to be a 20-year scale? Do we want it to be a 30-year scale? Those types of things. Are we going to stop certain positions at certain years because the expectation is by that time, they should have moved down a row due to some sort of promotion or things? So, again, there's still a lot of steps that have to take place. So, we will keep you in tune with that as we go through it. And you will be involved directly in some of those conversations possibly because there's going to be direct dollar amounts tied to them.
I was the board member that had asked for the study of a good comparison between the schools. And I do think probably a work session is going to be needed before some kind of decision like that is made. Because, there's a lot of information that goes into it. When I met with Hammer, I mean, we were in there almost three hours going over because there's so much discrepancy in positions. So, like, it looks up here like we're really heavy in like administration and assistant superintendents and all that. But then, you go down here to like administrator buildings, we don't have as many, you know, our salaries aren't there. So, there's just so much information in that report that before you'd ever want to make a decision on something like that. Because, that's a big chunk of money to the district. We would want to sit down and really have a full understanding.
I appreciate the added career progression.
Yeah.
That, like, the retention piece is huge. And especially, it will be eye-opening, I'm sure, the people that have been here for 20 years. And if you're a secretary and you've been at this district for 20 years, that's a career that, you know, we should compensate. And, I have heard some of the frustrations a lot lately. And I appreciate that we know, or I guess the challenge is, we will have this ready at the end of June going into July. Because, inflation hasn't gone down any time.
Yeah, absolutely. And to Jamie's point as well, and I think the conversation that she has been having is more on the administrative certified side. But, that's something that we have to be cognizant of. Because, when you're possibly spending this type of dollars to correct the classified hourly wage, then it also is going to affect what or how we do things for this one year, for that other group of employees as well. So, again, there's nothing simple about what we have in front of us. It will take some very good conversations, discussions, and meaningful engagement by all of us. So, we can make the best decision we can for our employees, but also for the district moving forward. And again, I do fully intend to open up a much deeper look into just the admin side of this, starting next school year as well.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this. Because, it's, it's an interesting paradigm that we're dealing with here. And, I think, well, I'm looking forward to the equation and how the equation looks and fits.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. You're up, Hammer.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Dirksen, I have two items tonight. The first one is our audit report from Kennedy McKee. Nobody really wants an exciting audit report. I'm hoping it's sufficiently dull and boring. And if it doesn't put you to sleep, at least you can sleep better after you hear Pat talk about it. But, I'm going to let Pat Freeze from Kennedy McKee come and tell you what their findings were.
Thank you, Hammer. Good evening, Dr. Dirksen and the board members. Everybody got their copies? Yeah. Okay. So, there's a loose letter in the front. That's the governance letter that we're required to by some professional standards to get to you each year. You guys have all heard me talk. So, this is going to go very fast tonight. So, no new accounting policies were adopted. Their most, the new ones, or the big ones are listed in Note A to the financials. I'll show you those when we go back there. There were no transactions that didn't have proper authoritative guidance or consensus. Everything was recorded in the proper period. Everything looked good. Your biggest accounting estimate is going to be your purchase order system. We evaluated that and did not have any issues with your purchase order system. We'll talk about long-term debt in Note D when we get back there and capital projects in Note G. Those are the main ones to point out. No difficulties encountered in performing our audit, dealing with management or anybody. We did make one journal entry that we make every year to record your medical claims at the end of the year, which takes like three months after the end of the year to get an accurate number. So, that's why you never have them recorded. Because, it wouldn't be that accurate. No disagreements with management as far as financial accounting reporting or auditing matters. There were no consultations with other independent accountants. The only finding we did have is we'd like to see a little bit more information in the consent agenda items on some of the approved things. But, other than that, everything was just great. So, moving into the body of the audit report, page one is your independent auditor's report. You get an unmodified opinion with the regulatory basis of accounting that you adopt every year in July. So, unmodified opinion is what you're looking for. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statement in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting. Our job is to obtain sufficient audit evidence to be able to express our opinions. We believe that we did that. So, supplementary information is going to be everything behind the notes, or, yeah, behind the notes to the financial statement. And in relation to the financial statement, all of that was fairly presented as well. So, no issues there. Page four is your financial statement. Each one of your funds is listed individually on this statement. You start with your beginning unencumbered cash. You add back your ad receipts, subtract expenditures. You get your ending unencumbered cash, add back accounts payable. You get your cash balance. So, if you go to the end, start of the year with just a little over $56 million, you had receipts of $188 million. Now, you pull out transfers between funds of $47 million, you still have a very, very large amount of receipts that you guys are in charge of. So, expenditures were just about $174 million. You ended the year with $70 million in unencumbered cash. You add back the payables of just under $7 million and your cash balance at the end of the year was $77 million. of the year was 77 million dollars. That's a snapshot. Each one of those funds is presented in more detail in the financials. Okay, so the notes start on page seven. Note A, the summary of significant accounting policies. No real changes in those from the prior year, so I'm just going to skip that one. Note B, compliance with Kansas statutes. The federal funds are drawn down on a reimbursement basis. So basically you have to spend the money first, and then you draw it down as a reimbursement. So you end the year with some negative cash balances in your federal funds, which is basically just waiting on the funds to be put into your account from the feds. So no real issues with that. There was one, out of all your activity funds, there was only one that did have a negative balance at the end of the year. There's always one. But out of the hundreds that you have, that's very good. And this has been discussed with whoever was in charge of that. But I don't want to say it out loud because people are on TV. But I mean, really, very minor, very minor. So deposits and investments, all of your deposits and investments were adequately secured at year end in accordance with statutes. And then Note D, long-term debt. You have the two issues, long-term debt, started the year at 70 and a half million, ended the year at 61 million. So paid all your payments on time, and you can see at the top of page 12, those two issues should be completed by the end of 2032's school year. Payments are going right off as scheduled. Operating leases, got a few of those. The payments required are listed there as well. Your capital projects, most of those were completed by the end of the year. I think you're getting ready to start some new ones, so. Inter-fund transfers. Now, when I said that at the, when we were in the financial statement, the general fund and the supplemental general fund receive the lion's share of the state aid, the taxes, et cetera, and those are required to be transferred to the at-risk funds, bilingual, et cetera, to spend the funds. So that's why they've got to be transferred to the bilingual fund, et cetera, at risks to be spent. So those are the big transfers there. Other long-term obligations, statutes require you offer insurance, et cetera, death and disability through CAPERS, your compensated absences policy. You've got a Section 125 plan. Note J is CAPERS. That's just a mess. We'll just skip over that. The state funds your CAPERS for you, so basically they put it into your bank account and then they draw it right back out. So no big, no, nothing big to point out there. Risk management, you do have an internal service fund accounting for your health insurance. Those are the transactions. Beginning of the year liabilities, again, those were, that was the journal entry that we did book, the liabilities. So you can see the changes in claims, the reimbursements from your stop-loss policy, the claim payments that were actually made, and then the liabilities at the end of the year. So contingencies, anytime you have federal or state grants, there's always a chance that one of those agencies will come in and take a look at it. We did not see anything that would require, oh, how do we say that there? In the opinion, no touch disallowed claims if they would come in to look. And they always do. Head Start famously gets audited more than anybody, and I don't think you guys had any disallowed claims in, well, several years. So subsequent events, no subsequent events to point out, so. Okay, page 17, your budget. If you look on page 17, your certified budget and then adjustments to comply with legal maximums brings you your budget for comparison, your expenditures, and then the far right-hand column, if there's anything in brackets, that's a budget violation. No brackets, so no budget violations. Everything looked good there. The individual funds, there's not really much to point out. The general fund and the LOB fund are set by the state, basically. You can set your budget, but when they come out and do the audit of your enrollments, that sets what your budget's going to be. That's what that little adjustment to comply with the legal maximum is in each one of those. So you spent exactly what you were allowed to. Any money you don't spend in the general fund gets sent back to the state, so we always like to see that one zeroed out. Very good. LOB or supplemental general, the same way. You spent exactly what you're allowed to, so looked good. The rest of these funds, I don't really have anything to point out. Everything looked good. So we're just going to skip the rest of the funds unless you guys want to take a look at it. No, okay. The district activity funds start on page 40. These are at the building levels. The district activity funds and the agency funds at the building levels, so we deal with each one of the buildings. And all of those didn't have any real issues there. So everything looked good. Okay, the appendices start on page 44. So since you have 17, 18 million dollars worth of federal expenditures, you're required to have an additional compliance audit with, that the feds require. So it's called a single audit and an audit in accordance with the uniform guidance. Anyways, out of the, which if you look at page 48, 49, or 50, you can see expenditure were just under 18 million dollars last year, 17.6. So out of all of those federal funds, we did not have any findings, which is the best you can hope for. So that's all I have. Questions, comments?
None.
Nope. Great. That's as short as I can do it. We appreciate the business. Gave Hammer a new copy of an engagement letter to do next year's audit. We sure appreciate the business, and we've had a good working relationship for the 30 years I've been there, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
I, I would agree with that. We don't just talk to these guys once a year. They are good business partners. And Molly actually started that. She was very proactive about making contact several times a year, just when something new comes up, hey, are we doing this right? So it, it's not like they just stop by once a year and take a look at us. I mean, we, there's a lot of contact throughout the year, and so they're very helpful when we ask about how to do things right. So it, it's been a good relationship with these guys so far. So I'm going to ask you to approve that, and when you approve this report, you're also approving the engagement letter for next year.
Make a motion.
Second.
We've got a motion by Tracy, a second by Ryan, all in favor. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Not only appreciative of the auditing firm and the work that they do, but the business department deserves a lot of credit too. Because that report is beyond outstanding, and I hope people understand, for the size of district that we are, the amount of dollars that we go through, to have that minimal of corrections, and it's just almost, almost unheard of, I would say. So I really want to give Hammer and his staff the credit that they deserve, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So next on the list is the approval of the CMAR contract. But let me kind of recap and explain where we are in the process and where we have yet to go, and feel free to jump in and ask questions anytime. So I, I don't remember when we actually started this journey, but it was quite a while ago, and we asked for permission to hire an architect to come up with just some general concepts. And I, I'm going to get the dollar amounts a little off, but we spent somewhere between 30 and 40,000 dollars to come up with some concepts, to do an expansion at the high school that included a new weight room and a bowling alley with it. So they drew up some ideas. We liked that. Or you approved hiring them. We got that going. Then there's different ways to bring the project. You can do a design build bid. You can do a CMAR, construction manager at risk. So that decision had to be made, and we went, and you guys approved the CMAR process. Then you have to figure out who the contractor's going to be, and that was a fairly elaborate process as well. And so a few meetings ago, we went through the process and we recommended Building Solutions, which you guys approved. So that gets them in the door as the contractor for that project, but we didn't have an actual contract with them. So that's what this is tonight, is the approval of the contract. So where are we at in the middle of this? Well, we've had several meetings. We have some concepts. There's been no actual construction documents bid. You, you haven't actually, I mean, we're on, we're on track. The, the intent is to bring forth a, a project that you approve at a gross maximum price, not to exceed, to build what I'm showing. Let's, let's take a pause, and I'll show you a couple of, where the concept is right now. You're not approving this building. You're approving the contract to move in that direction. And, and I'm going to hop around, but I want to make sure you kind of get an understanding. So, so, so the idea is to extend to the west on the, on the current indoor facility. So that's kind of looking from the southwest to the northeast, and that would be the, that, that end would be where the bowling alley is. So that's looking from the north. So you, you end up with a footprint that's like 73 feet to the west and 257 feet north and south. And within there, about, I'm going to just say roughly half of it is a weight room, and roughly half of it is a bowling alley with some restrooms in the, in the middle.
Was there a third piece to this project?
Was there a what?
A third piece?
Yes.
Yes, the, the third piece is the girls wrestling is moved to the current weight room.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's a good point. It's not new construction. It's using an old facility for a new purpose.
But the new construction would be the lanes and the?
Yeah, yeah. So the building and then, and that's an eight-lane bowling alley. Again, this is just a concept to give you an idea. That's at least more than twice the size of the current weight room with a mezzanine up, up there as well. So that, that's just to give you a picture. It's not been drawn to scale, well, that's to scale, but the construction documents haven't been done. So where are we at in this process? Okay, so we're going to ask you to approve the contract, and that, that gets them more involved. So today, where are we at money-wise? Well, we have completely engaged Tezzeray, and, and I can get you exact numbers, and I probably should have had them. But I'm going to, I, I think our contract with them was like 335, 350,000 dollars for their services. Now, we're not into them for that much because all we've done is concepts at this point. There, I mean, there's been discussions with various engineers and consultants, and I can get you the exact number. I got an application for payment today, but I can't tell you if we're a third of the way into that 300,000. But I, I could literally send you an email in the morning and tell you where we're at in, in terms of, of dollar amount. But, but they're not done yet. If you look at this proposal right here for the CMAR, right now, they, their, their estimate is 17,500 for pre-construction work, and that's where we're at in this process. So, so some of their payment scale is based on the services that they provide. Some of it is a percentage. They've got a 6% CMAR fee based on a project of 4.5 million. So we haven't incurred those expenses, all of those yet, but that is the best estimate. So we are scheduled to have a meeting tomorrow and another one on the 20th of this month. By the time we're done with those, we should have the concepts completely figured out. And at that point, then what happens is Tezzeray and Building Solutions, they, they generate a full set of construction documents, so you have all your exact plans, then you have your specs, so they can go out and get actual bids. When that happens, then we come back to you guys, and my guess is that's going to be the end of January, maybe the very first part of February. And then we have an actual price. The, the target is with both the architect and the contractor not to exceed 5 million dollars. So you haven't approved that yet because we haven't given it to you to approve. So the, so the action tonight is to approve this contract. The next action that we will bring before you is the actual gross maximum price not to exceed, and, and that's when that becomes a full-blown done deal. We've always been moving in this direction. It's just there are many steps to the process, and it can be very confusing, especially when it takes as long as it does. So I, I kind of rushed through that a little bit fast, but do you know where we are and where we're going?
And the only thing I want to add to that is this is right where we started. From the beginning, we said this is 5 million or less, and, and we've stayed on that key. And to do that, we've had to size some things down. We've had to cut some things out, and, and we're still getting what we were hoping that we could accomplish. So the final decision will be when we come within not to exceed request. But, but you're, you're taking a big step to move for the CMAR to allow Building Solutions to do the project.
So between now and then, we will incur more cost because there'll be more architect work into it. There'll be some work from the contractor, but we won't have actually broken any ground. Obviously, when you approve or whatever, however that comes out in, in February, that, that's when it becomes a full-blown project that we're moving forward with, and everybody knows what we're, you know, I mean, this is what you're going to end up with in, in concept. You know, those are estimates. We don't have, we have a wait list, for example, but we don't know every piece of equipment we're going to buy. There's still estimates. There's still some moving parts to it. We, we just made some changes on the square footage because of how it affected the fire rating and the, and sprinkler needs. So there's some tweaks and adjustments that, that will still happen, but once we get that nailed down in the next two meetings, then, then we shouldn't be making changes. They'll have a full set of construction documents, and we'll know exactly what we're getting and exactly what it'll cost.
I have a question. So one, we know that a change in administration could come with high tariffs. It's going to change the cost of a lot of things potentially. But mine is more, in this last 12 months, we've had almost 30 billion dollar disasters, and we have a pond right next to where we're getting ready to add. And in these concepts, there's not a lot of flood mitigation. Having spent some time in North Carolina, where I got to see what 30 inches of rain could do, which nobody predicted would happen, but we've had so many events across the country where they've had more than 500-year floods recently. That makes me really nervous because I was like, you know, we could muck out a weight room, but totally replacing a bowling alley would be super scary.
Well, I'll make sure I ask that question tomorrow because that water's going to run one direction or another. And I'm sure there are surveys, but I, I honestly hadn't thought of that, but I, I will make sure somebody does.
Yeah, I mean, carpet.
Only answer I have to that is they have discussed flood mitigation in, in the process with that, that drainage.
Stormwater runoff is always a huge deal when constructing.
But that, but they haven't thought of it to the depth that you're talking, not that depth is the right word. We don't want depth, but.
You mitigate a 30-inch rain.
Yeah. Well, look at the elevations. I mean, we, we have one place to grow.
Yeah.
And we don't have, but, you know.
Yeah.
Would it mean if we had to move a pond, or we had to make a spillway after it got to a certain level, or retaining walls? But that, concrete's super expensive, I've learned in this role, and I, I think that adds considerably to the potential, potential costs.
That's a great question. I will absolutely answer that. And, and I know when we did the parking lots over here, they had to look at the 100-year and how many inches of rain in a certain amount of time, and we spent many hundreds of thousands of dollars putting tanks under those things so it could catch that stuff. I, I don't know if it would have caught 30 inches, but, so it's, it's a valid question, and I'll, I'll make sure it gets answered, asked and answered.
With a new entryway for traffic and all those things, like there's a lot of decisions that play off each other if we're going to add different drives and stuff like that. But it's beautiful renditions.
I know no one wants to talk about this, but I brought it up, I think, in Capital Outlay, you know, on how close we are to capacity at this high school. And if we're going to go, you know, put this kind of money in, at what point do we start talking about if we are going to entertain that at some point? Do we keep wanting to add on? If we are going to entertain that at some point, do we keep wanting to add on out there? I guess that would be not to either.
So that's, that's, yeah, probably five of you don't know that, but we, I think it was last week, our Capital Outlay committee, me, meeting happened and, and so we, that's where we review the projects, go over the five-year plan and then kind of come up with a list of what we think we want to bring forth to you guys in the course of this year. And, and long-term planning is, is something that's been on there, so that, that was brought up. Um, crowding at the middle school, what to do with Sewell Elementary Basement. So those are, those are strategic things that, that need to be discussed. We're, today, right now, we have about a twenty-four million dollar capital outlay balance and we're anticipating fourteen million dollars worth of projects to bring forth this year and, and ending with a thirty-five million dollar capital outlay balance. Um, but, um, but Jamie's correct, it did come up, we haven't met to communicate that back to you. Um, and so where, where we are is, is we are looking for approval of, of this contract. But if you want to start thinking down the future, I mean, that, that's a, that's a three-year project. Uh, finishing Sewell Basement takes time, how you want to, you know, those are all strategic things that probably should be talked about, like, like Jason talked about, a capital plan for, um, for human capital. While we do have a five-year capital plan for capital outlay, we don't have, they're, they're just placeholders. We haven't discussed future expansions in, in depth, what, you know, what, what's going to go on with the cheese factor. I mean, our, our enrollment, it is up, uh, finally passed where it was before COVID. Our, uh, which is great because garden's having the opposite problem, they're, they're going down. Uh, there's, I think if we redid that study again, you know, our housing numbers are, I don't know what they are, but there's a lot of new housing around. So, so I, I'm not trying to get around things, but, but the Capital Outlay meeting, committee meeting, it, it is new information and I, I did forget to bring that up. So, but the action that I'm asking for tonight is to approve this. You're not actually approving this project at this time, but that is the direction that we're moving.
So if we prove this tonight and then don't approve the project in January, where does the money go?
So, okay, great question. So I can tell you exactly where we're at, I can't tell you tonight, but I can tell you tomorrow. So between now and February, we will have incurred more expense because by then they will have written a full set of construction documents. And so I'm going to tell you that, I'm making this up, but eighty, ninety percent of our Tesoray contract, that will be due. Um, some more of the contractor fees will be due, but a lot of that happens after the ground is broken. So this, uh, and by the way, let me, let me clarify this, this total contract is nine hundred and fifteen thousand, but I already asked you to approve the seventeen-five, so the net on that tonight is eight hundred and ninety-eight additional. We won't have incurred as, near as much of that because we won't have broken ground by that point. They're going to have some time and some effort into it, so there'll be something there and I can't give you an honest percentage. Um, but, you know, the equipment, the materials, that stuff won't have been incurred. We won't have, um, contracted, you know, pre-construction or anything like that. There, there was talk about, um, getting the building started, uh, ordering that. We haven't done anything and we won't until you guys approve that. So we will have more expense into it, it'll be more, it'll, and it'll be a sunk cost and I can get you an estimate on that, uh, because I don't have that tonight, but I can give you a pretty good idea. So it'll be greater than what it is today, but it won't be, um, you know, it won't be anywhere as close to the cost of the project itself and it won't be a, a lot against this contract, it'd be more against the architect contract.
Well, go ahead. When we added on to the high school last time, we had a conversation about that we would need to decide, are we going to have one large high school or looking at two high schools? And at the time, the board went with a large one high school. Um, as far as we felt like that was the direction, the best direction for the community, so.
I just want to encourage you to remember, um, whether we have one high school or two eventually, and, and eventually there will be, I do believe, and, and I don't know how far down the road it is. But the fact that we need a larger weight room for the high school that we have is true. The fact that we need space to be fair to the girls wrestling, which is the fastest-growing program we have, is true. The fact that bowling, there is no other option within our community than this brainchild, if you will. And the other benefit of this bowling is also for the unified program, which provides an opportunity for our special needs, not to mention an opportunity for our classes that I foresee being in the future for, uh, uh, lower grades to have class parties, et cetera. I mean, I, I, I think the district will get great use out of it, no matter how many high schools we have. So I, I think there are benefits in all three areas, I think this has been, uh, well thought out and I, and, and this is the way that I see we can provide that opportunity.
Have we calculated the added staff that the, that the space is going to require?
Uh, actually, no, that, it, it needs to be considered, but I don't, I don't know if that goes up, down or stays the same, but.
I mean, anytime you add.
I will ask that, ye- yes, but today they're splitting them up into two different places, so it, it could be possible you're actually saving some. I, I don't know that, but I will ask that question tomorrow as well.
Thanks.
I mean, our utility costs will certainly go up because we've got more cubic feet that were air conditioning and things like, and we don't have that estimate either, but I was planning on bringing that one forward. Um, so, I mean, that, that's a great question, but I don't have that answer, but I can get it.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve, we got to, uh, it's not necessarily cart before the horse, but we got to know what's in front of us and until they draw plans, we won't know.
This is a long, complicated process, the way, the way the C M A R process, but, but we are, believe it or not, we're actually stepping through it exactly like it's drawn up and like we're supposed to. I mean, a design bid build is a little easier because you just, you plunk down and you do it all and you, you know from day one what you're, what you're getting. And, and this, there's a fair amount of selection and decisions that happen along the way and you don't know the full picture until you get really close to the end.
I'll suck it.
We've got a motion then by Tracy and a second by Tammy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Seven, zero. Thanks Hammer.
Thank you.
All right, we are ready for Board of Education Member District Responsibilities, Park and Rec, Ryan? Um, Bright Beginnings, Tammy?
We have a meeting Thursday.
Okay. Um, Special Ed?
I don't have anything to report.
Um, Legislative, Jared? I think Dr. Dirksen?
Yeah, I, I would add, um, have an invitation, uh, and accepted to have breakfast with Senator Reichman on Wednesday before they go back, uh, to start the new session. And, uh, one thing that I, I'm kind of gearing up for that I think is going to be a lot of table talk around the state is, uh, trying to convince the legislature to take action on Capers Tier Three, to move it back to Tier Two, to help, uh, Jason and all H R departments with their retention. Because right now, new hires, that, uh, Capers Tier Three is no benefit to anyone. And so they came very close last year to passing that, but it didn't happen. And so that's really where my focus is going to be with him on that and to thank him for the support that he has given us because, uh, uh, to his credit, Senator Reichman has, um, supported public schools many times, so I appreciate that.
I have one legislative, uh, I just kind of getting your perspective. Um, newly-elected President Trump is talking about deporting illegal, being illegal, uh, uh, what our percentage of assumed people that are undocumented in Dodge City is a measurable amount of people. How that affects, uh, our student population could definitely take a hit on our budget, our student population, social, emotional, families being split apart. So the potential effects for us are financial, uh, beyond what we can even guess. I'm imagining there are some conversations because in Western Kansas, we have a potential for a bigger impact and that is a lot of our at-risk funding as well. Um, has there been any conversations at the education level on that?
Daily, yes, there, there's a lot of conversation going on and Dr. Springsteen might want to step up and ta-talk. Southwest Plains had a speaker come in, uh, and address all the superintendents just, uh, last week. And we, as a team, have been very concerned about this because there is an impact that could be felt and may not be felt because, uh, the simple fact is that the, uh, uh, industries that we provide in this community feed the world and, and, uh, I don't think that can stop. And so how, what the impact is going to be remains to be seen. However, uh, we're doing all we can to be as supportive and helpful for the students that we have because we feel like our job is to educate the kids that we have. And so at this point, um, I don't know what more you want to add about that or, uh, is Diana still here?
Mm-hmm.
And, and I know, uh, we, we've definitely had this conversation already and, and we do it on a daily basis, really.
I, I do know it's the six thirteen meeting, the superintendents of the smaller districts are terrified. You know, because you get a smaller district and something, fifteen kids disappear somewhere, that's hu- that's absolutely huge to them. You know, and so it could, it, I, I mean, I'm just repeating what I heard, but it's, it's.
I think we're all worried about it and, but we don't know what, we don't know what to worry about yet. And so, um, at this point, uh, we're just trying to be as careful, cautious and steadfast. Talked about it at Admin Council to a little degree and, and the thing is, we, we've got to be supportive and steadfast and, uh, be ready to react if, if we need to. But the main thing that we feel like we need to do is to be there for our kids and do the best we can for them. So that's, that's all I can do about this. It's always the kids that suffer for adult problems.
Yeah, I, I know, I, and Jared could probably correct me on the years, but late nineties, early two thousand, when ICE was very active in our community, there was a lot of community mistrust. And right now, I think we're, you know, we've battled to get parent involvement and that's because of that level of trust and I, you know, just being so cognizant of, there might be people that don't come to as many meetings now, they don't want to be, um, as involved and that battle is just going to get a lot harder for the parent involvement, uh, and activity in the schools, I have a feeling.
We'll be as active as we can be to be helpful for our school and for our kids so that we can, uh, provide an education and, and maintain the stability that we have worked so hard to build and to have.
Appreciate all the conversations, I know it's awkward conversations to have, but.
It's reality.
The impact.
Yeah.
Can be swift on our future plans.
Okay, moving on, what about Capital Outlay?
Yep, we met last Monday, I believe, Tuesday morning, um, a great meeting. Uh, we added a conversation, uh, all the Capital Outlay projects are really scheduled and segmented, like every so many years, we're hitting different things and it was very evident they had a, a clear plan. Um, we added conversations about Red Field, uh, several different things. Besides the playing field surface is insufficient, you look at all of that, uh, new addition that we've done and then you go over to Red Field and it, it's tired and needs a lot of help. The lights, the light poles are as old as the field probably. So that was an added thing we talked about and, uh, for everything from equity, you know, if you look at all of our places that we, uh, host sporting events, that's the one that probably needs the most attention next, safety and then aesthetic. We did all of that for this whole section of our property and then we have that one corner that looks a little rough. Luckily, they had already been having conversations, was it Cal Ripken Baseball previously? So there, there'd already been some plans drawn up and it's not starting from scratch. But that was a nice addition and I felt it was like appropriate. When you look at our level of money, that's probably where Jamie's coming from, we have a big balance. And are we going to be intentional, like we are going to have to have discussions about future growth? So are we intentionally holding money in that capital outlay and being transparent that it's because of future growth conversations? Cause I know we've got criticized for holding too much in that before, does that sound about accurate?
Very good. Good, good information. Um, Calendar Committee?
Uh, yeah, I think the.
We're voting right now.
They had the all-staff vote, it said they were voting, uh, between November eighteenth and December fifth and Carrie was hoping to, uh, present tonight. Okay, so I assume by our next meeting, they'll have the results of that.
Very good. All right, we've got, Jared, you're down to review bills in January. Um, December twentieth will be the end of the quarter, second quarter, no classes. Uh, Staff Development and Teacher Work Day, uh, there'll be a two-hour early dismissal and offices will close two hours early for the holiday. December twentieth through January fifth, Christmas break. January sixth, no classes, Staff Development, we will lock. Um, it'll, it'll actually be January fourteenth through seventeenth. Hopefully, it'll be the fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth where we do superintendent interviews, but we won't know that just yet. Um, January twentieth, Martin Luther King Junior Day, no school, staff holiday. Then the twenty-seventh of January will be our second, uh, meeting at noon at Sunnyside. Um, we do have, are there any items for future board meetings or additional information, anybody? All right, we've got two executive sessions. First one, um, we need Dr. Dirksen and Ja- um, Jason. And Samantha. Okay, um, and we need. Ten minutes. And then the second one, um, will be for, uh, executive session discussion of, uh, non-elected personnel. Um, we probably need fifteen minutes for that and it will be just the board.
That's correct.
So we need, um, a motion to go into our first executive session.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Jamie and Jeff made the second, all right, here we go.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, aye. Are they ready to go home?